I call this Board of Education meeting to order this time. Ready for the roll call? Let's vote. Praise the religions, to your canvas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we call for a moment of silence for all of the happenings in Pitt County area, in Pitt County schools. We call for a moment of silence. Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and a second to the motion. Are you ready to vote?
Oh.
Let's vote.
Do it again?
No, do it. Okay.
Okay.
Do I need to do something?
If it, uh, where are you?
Yeah.
Did you hit your confirm button?
Confirm button.
Did you hit confirm?
I've hit it three times, four times.
You might have to re-vote. That's all.
Yeah, hit it. Yes, and then confirm. There it is. Perfect.
I have no public expression at this time. Now we have a spotlight on teaching and learning.
Hi, I'm Donna Gillum. I'm the principal at Elmhurst. We've come tonight to share with you an award we received. I received a letter on July 30th telling me that we were going to be awarded. We received a plaque from DPI not long ago, and I'll read it to you. "We are a high-progress school, and this is in recognition of our school's excellence and improving student achievement for three consecutive years." I received our scores in comparison to others not long ago, but those haven't been made public yet, and I'm just really proud of what our teachers are doing, what our kids are doing. And I've brought with me tonight three of our teachers. We talked while we were coming over about how nice it would have been to bring all our kids with us. I've got Carla Wayne Wright. She's our EC contact and an ID moderate teacher at our school. Clarissa Lee, a fifth-grade teacher, and Heidi Chriswell, a fourth-grade teacher. They've got a packet for you that's in front of you, and they're gonna each share a little piece of that to let you know some of the things we're doing in our school.
Good evening. It's great to be here. We really appreciate this opportunity. Our EC and regular education staff work diligently as a team to make appropriate decisions for each student in the Exceptional Children's Program at Elmhurst Elementary School. Administration and staff collaborate to ensure best placement, best practices, and constantly problem-solve to deliver the most effective instruction for our students with special needs. Students in the self-contained Exceptional Children's Programs were a significant part of the recent recognition as Title One, as a Title One reward school. Having the same growth of students in the self-contained setting throughout the testing years is positive for the school, the teacher, the families, and, most importantly, the students. It is a choice in our district whether or not we return our integrated test scores back to their home school of the students who are identified as having special needs, who are centrally placed. At Elmhurst, it is our choice to keep those scores. We instruct those students. We keep their scores. Some of my students in the classroom for students with moderate intellectual disabilities are centrally placed, as well as some of the students in our autistic programs. Instruction for these students has previously been aligned with the extensions of the North Carolina Standard Course of Study, and now, of course, will be based on common core and essential standards. The integration and utilization of technology, including the use of Smartboard activities and lessons, a smart table, which I have the opportunity of having in my classroom, iPod touches, and the use of an iPad have proved effective means in which our students with special needs learn and are assessed. I think you have some examples of some of the activities, the lessons, and the assessments that we do with our students in the self-contained setting. I'm so proud of the accomplishments of all our students, staff, and administrators at Elmhurst. The fact that the scores of students in the self-contained setting contributed to the school receiving recognition of the Title One reward school have certainly demonstrated that our students with special needs have gained knowledge and maximized their understanding of subject areas in which they have been instructed. Thank you.
Good evening. I am so glad that you chose us to share some of our strategies and tools that we use at our school to make our students to become successful. One tool you have in your packet is the behavior reflections. It deals with not only behavior that the students are familiar with through our PBIS program, but it also deals with academics. This is a multi-flow map, and we use this tool as a way for students to reflect on their behavior through academics. This tool gets everyone involved, the parents, the students, and the teacher. The next tool that I would like to share with you is our interactive folder. This tool supports our vision with driving our students to become critical thinkers. On one side of the folder, students are introduced to key concepts, and on the opposite side, they interact with the concept. In mathematics, you will find out that we are using a new tool this year, and it is this tool right here. We always instructed our students to orally discuss how they arrived at an answer. This year, we're incorporating a written response sheet to be used with math instruction. This tool is used when an answer is incorrect. The student identifies what caused them to miss the problem and what the correct answer is. At this time, Heidi Chriswell will come and conclude.
Thank you all for having us tonight. I'm gonna just share a little bit about what makes Elmhurst so special and why I think that we received this award. Of course, the most important thing is collaboration, not only with, within our staff. I mean, Big Mama and I teach, I teach fourth grade, she teaches fifth grade. Sorry, that's what we call her, and all the kids call her too, but we collaborate together all of the time. We collaborate with our parents. We collaborate with Ms. Gillum. It's a constant team effort, and I think that's what makes us so successful. Not one person is taking any credit for anything. We really, really work together to ensure what's best for our kids. The only thing that we're worried about is what's best for our students, and I think that that's what makes Elmhurst so successful and why we've showed growth the last three years, is because we share with each other. I mean, teachers are our own best resources, and we help each other all of the time, and I think that's why we're really successful. One of the other things I think that makes us really successful is the relationships that we have, not only with each other, with our staff, but the relationships with our kids, our students, and our families. We really work hard to form relationships that go from year to year. And when we sat down on Friday to talk about the things that we thought were important and the things that we wanted to talk about, Ms. Lee brought me a letter that one of my students that I had last year had written in her class, and if you look at it, it says "fourth grade." And it was by a little girl that came January of 2012 to my classroom. She walked in, and this is unedited. This was her story, and when Ms. Lee brought this to me, she said, "I want you to read this." This was a student that walked into my room in January, and she did not like me, and she made it very evident to the fact that she did not like me. And I'm just gonna read this to you. I'm gonna edit it a little bit as I read it, but you can see her version, and this is a long way from where she came, when she came to my room. So, "In 2011, I was living in Washington, North Carolina, with my father, and I attended fourth grade at John Small School. One day while talking to my parents, we decided that I would continue the school year out at my mother's house in Greenville, North Carolina. The next day, we came to Elmhurst School where Ms. Chriswell was my teacher. She was very tall, and I didn't know anybody, so I was very scared. I felt like everybody's eyes were on me as I walked into the classroom and sat in my chair. Ms. Chriswell said, 'Class, we have a new student,' and told me to tell everybody my name, and my heart was racing. All Ms. Chriswell was talking about was the EOG, and on my first day of class, I had a whole lot of homework. I had a hard time in the beginning because I was not used to working so hard and learning new things so fast, but Ms. Chriswell helped me and pushed me hard and called my mother every single day until we were all on the same track. It was very hard, but I pushed myself along with a big shove from my mother and Ms. Chriswell. When we finished testing, I made all threes on my EOG, and not only was I proud of myself, my mother and Ms. Chriswell were proud of me too. I thought Ms. Chriswell was being hard and mean to me, but she had faith in me, and I didn't think I had in myself, and it paid off in the end for me because I passed my EOG, and I learned a lot of new things that I didn't know before. For that reason, I love Ms. Chriswell. When school was out for the summer, I really didn't want to do any work, but I heard Ms. Chriswell in my head saying, 'Jasmine, you better get it together.'" And I think this just goes to show that these types of relationships that we form with these kids and with these parents, you know, this same child comes and sees me at lunch. I have students in my class that I introduced to Ms. Lee and Mr. Lindsay, so that they're, the transition is so smooth. They feel comfortable coming to me. My kids feel comfortable going to them, and it just really, and the parents as well. We have formed those relationships. Ms. Gillum gets a lot of phone calls from fourth-grade parents at the beginning of the year, and they're always, because I call parents a lot when they don't have homework, every day. And soon, the parents get on board, and they call Ms. Gillum and say, "Is she gonna call me every day?" And she says, "Well, yes, she is." And the parents get on board, and we form these wonderful relationships, and I think that's what makes the difference. One of the other things I think is people ask me all the time, "What does Ms. Gillum make you do?" And I'm like, "What are you talking about? What do you mean? What does she make us do?" I think that without her support and her trust in us, she works well with us. We have things that are due, but she's very, some things are negotiable. You know, we have paperwork that's due. She'll give us some extra days to get things done because we are always working for the students. And she truly cares about us as people. She cares about our families, and it makes us want to work harder for her. So, I think that's what makes Elmhurst so special, is we're always working for the kids and that we all really care about each other. So, I am honored that, to be a part of the staff that works at Elmhurst. Thank you.
Bishop, I just want the board to know, this is the only school in Pitt County that was named a reward school, a Title One reward school. So, if you ask why did we pick Elmhurst to come, of our Title One schools, this is the only school that was at that high level recognized by the state. So, we're very proud of your accomplishments.
Bishop.
Yes, sir.
Donna. Yeah, I would just like to say, when you first went to Elmhurst, I was evaluating...
You were, that's right.
And, you know, there were a lot of things that we talked about, and there were a lot of issues there. But I will say that you took, as they say, the bull by the horns, and you endured, and you got the support of your staff on your side, and your staff is now really producing great rewards. And I think the interactive tools and collaborative learning aspect that you have included, the writing part in the math is great, and, because I remember, remember you when you were presenting your school improvement plan, and you've really come a long ways, and I want to congratulate you.
Thank you very much.
For doing an outstanding job as a principal, a leader, and a friend to your teachers.
Thank you. It's a really great place to work. It means so very much together every day, Mr. Forbes, it really does.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to build on Mr. Forbes' comments with regard to Ms. Gillum. Not only just great relations at the schools, I can say honestly, with the parents and with the community, that we'll hear a little bit more during our Operations Committee meeting, as a member of that neighborhood, just the relationships are outstanding. Also, as a father of someone who attends Elmhurst, I'm looking at two teachers that one of my children has had and has currently, and I really love the family environment that's created there, and I'm just such a grateful dad. My wife called me, it was about, maybe about a week ago, and she said, "Sean, I had a wonderful talk with Ms. Lee today." And I said, "Okay. Who's Ms. Lee?" And she said, "Ms. Lee?" And I'm saying, "Okay, what'd y'all talk about?" She's like, "Well, we talked about bridging." I said, "Okay, again, who's Ms. Lee?" She's, "Big Mama." I said, "Big Mama." Okay, now I know who you're talking about, because it's just that, that family environment, and it really excels, and as parents, we appreciate that so much from all of you, and I love the EC program at Elmhurst.
The REC program really works with our reg ed kids constantly. It's great. Ms. Wayne Wright does a really nice job.
Very well.
And she came with us because she does a good job pushing into those ladies' classes. So, she gets the opportunity to have her kids year after year, and that's kind of the same mentality they've taken on to, even if they don't have them more than 180 days, they still feel, year after year, same responsibility.
Great job.
Thank you.
It's great.
Thank you. Thank you. Consent items? Have a motion on consent item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion on the floor and a second to the motion. Let's vote. And down to the new business. Operations Committee report. Sean King.
I'd like to invite Aaron to the microphone, but first of all, we still have our Elmhurst people here. If I can steal the thunder for the first part, Aaron, we were privy to a wonderful presentation by a local Girl Scout group that is working on an outdoor classroom at Elmhurst in conjunction with the school, and they are cleaning up debris from Hurricane Irene. Our operations department has worked in a fantastic manner with them. There's a little website available. I will email everyone a link to where you can see pictures of this progress and the Girl Scouts working on it, but that is just another example of how, just working in such an outstanding way with the community, and this is gonna be something that really enhances the outdoor academics of our school, makes it part of the community. So, thank you, Aaron. I'll have you take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the Chair alluded to the first item, we did meet on September 24th. We did not have a quorum of the committee there, but we covered a number of items. At this time, I'd like to review the rest of those items. The next item on the agenda was a review of the Chicade construction project. We wanted to publicly go on record that we have invested between Phase One site work and also the municipal sewer project that's currently in progress at Chicade, about $5 million investment into the future phases, two and three. Those second, third phases were awarded by the Board to Mr. Height and Associates. That project is designed, so as the county rebounds from its financial situation as we progress, we just need to remember that we've got that investment in it and also consider in our long-range planning where we go from here. The next thing we shared with the committee was an unbiased review that was done by the State Energy Management Office. We provided them their executive summary of their four-day visit to Pitt County, and the State Energy Management will be joining us on our October 15th meeting to present their overall findings of the district and where we are with energy performance contracting within the district and what their recommendations are. The next item on the agenda was an update on the textbook warehouse and surplus storage area behind Third Street. The Board, at its last meeting, ratified a lease with the Rizzuti's, who are now the owners of Third Street, for us to continue to lease back that part of the property for a 12-month period with another 12-month option to renew. But we wanted to keep on the forefront in everyone's attention that 12 months or 24 months can pass by very quickly, that we look at our needs, we look to address how we're moving forward with textbooks. What are our needs in the future? That will be determined by the curriculum people, is what are our needs as far as storage space. Mr. Forbes reminded us, which is very much true. Mr. Phil Ward does an outstanding job managing that, but it's like any large facility, it could use some organization and cleanup of things that have been allowed to accumulate over there for years because we've had the space. So, as we look at our future needs, dealing with the warehouse and surplus, that we consider those as well. And that was our last item of regular business on that for the agenda. Any questions?
I got a comment. The only thing I would say is, again, for, we had Third Street School up for sale almost a year, and I wish during that time period that we were looking at some place to put the text, those old textbooks and that, all that old material, so that we would not have to pay out $700 a month for 12 months. And I would hope that someone would go over there between now and the end of the year and look at that stuff that's in there and see what can be thrown out and that is not used, year after year. Yeah, there are textbooks there, but there are textbooks that we never use, and if some of those things could be done away with, we might could end that contract, or, well, it being a contract, we can't end it, but I was just saying that we had not made some use of other space that we already had to put that material so that we would not have to pay out that $700 a month. And I expressed that at the meeting.
Any other questions, committee? Thank you. Finance Committee report. Benji Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked Michael to come forward. We had an informal meeting on September, excuse me, yeah, September the 27th. We didn't have a quorum present, but we did talk informally about a couple of projects that we have going on, and one of those is our biodiesel project. I'm gonna ask Michael at this time if he would go a little bit more in-depth and kind of update everyone on that project, as well as a couple of other things.
Right now, we've been going at the biodiesel schools program since May, and the company, Green Circle, that we are contracting with, has been able to engage over 150 restaurants as part of that program, which is pretty outstanding considering the short timeframe that we've hit the road with this endeavor. Basically, at this point in time, 150 restaurants that the biodiesel for schools program is actually traveling to on an ongoing basis and picking up the cooking oil waste and transforming that into biodiesel and actually selling it at a profit for the school system. We've had success so far that we started visiting the schools, hoping to start to give that money back to the schools, and in the form of a donation, a check to the schools in the amount of that $1,000. That's just the tip of the iceberg with concerns to the profits that can be realized through the overall program as we continue to move forward. So, it's very exciting. The schools have been very, very excited as we've been discussing this with them. We plan a lot of activities where we'll continue to meet with the PTAs, the booster clubs, to further, to explain the benefits of the program and indirectly how the program will be benefiting their schools. We want to make sure that our schools are quickly seeing the benefit, and they realize that when they have that additional money to be used for supplies and equipment within their schools, or whatever those needs may be, they're coming from the biodiesel for schools program. So, a great start, and I hope we can continue to move forward that and expand it. We've got a lot of restaurants in this county. We've got some big bangers that we've already engaged with, but we want to continue to move forward that so that we can put that money, that garbage, transform that garbage and put it back into the classroom. I mean, it's a funny concept of the year. That's what it is. It's garbage, it's waste, but we're actually being able to benefit our students as a result of that. So, great job so far, and we'll continue to move forward as much as possible.
Did each of the schools get a check for $1,000, or all 36?
Yes, we're moving forward with, we've got to probably about 25, at least 25 of the schools so far, and met with them individually, and as a part of that, not only introduced that benefit to them, but basically talked about how we can use this to spotlight the program at their school. Got a lot of great ideas. Principals have just had outstanding ideas on how to move forward, and we're gonna capitalize on that. Literally, we're cooking with gas right now. Never mind.
Michael, how much, are there any categorical restrictions on how that money can be spent?
Basically, we've looked at it as to the instructional benefit of the schools, but leaving it up to the overall school administrator to see what's in the best need. I'll be honest with you, a lot of the schools, especially the larger schools, they're doing a lot of traveling with athletics, said that this would be a benefit to their fuel costs, that they had to end up paying back to the central office. It's really taken away other school resources from doing what they need to within the classroom. So, that would free up an additional $1,000 for that. A lot of, a lot of the schools said they were gonna put it directly into technology. I mean, that's a couple of iPads that they can put back into teachers' hands, students' hands. So, it's been a mixed bag so far, but ultimately, it's the field that they can put that, they can, that's a fundraiser for them. That's really how we started this. It's called the ultimate fundraiser, just like the Candyman, other dollars that are raised by the PTA, by the school. This is just to supplement that and hopefully maybe take the burden off the parents that otherwise would have to be asked to even support a field trip nonetheless.
How much revenue is anticipated to be bought in from this, just if it's, if all else continues in terms of the amount of individuals that are participating?
Based off of the level right now, which I hate to even quote this because it's my goal for it to grow much larger than it is, but given the magnitude of where we are right now, I'm looking at probably at least $65,000 to $75,000 a year. But again, this is real early in the process. As we continue to grow that number, and eventually, to, and I've said this to every school as we've done, we've made visits, my goal is to, Dean is our main contact. Our main goal in the next several years is to not even have Dean sitting at the table. I'd like to make sure that we are able to recoup 100% of those profits back for Pitt County schools. Now, we're a long ways from that, but that's what the overall goal is down the road.
My question was gonna be, how long is Dean gonna be involved? That was, and you're saying probably...
That's hard to say. Could be three to five years.
Okay.
I mean, that's depending on the success of the program.
You're increasing the number of businesses that are participating.
And that was the goal. Exactly. He's been able to do that on his own thus far, being from the outside, not even from this area, being from the western part of the state. That's part of the overall visit to the school, to ensure that we start this at more of a grassroots level, so we can get the parents involved, the teachers involved, the students involved, to get them all excited about the process, and because the more excited that they are about the process, the more money can go back in their hands.
And I think it's important that the instructional field trips...
Amen.
The instructional field trips that some of these schools have had to cut back on due to budget cuts, I think this would be one good way to help those schools in participating in those field trips that they've had to cut back on, because a lot of these kids don't have the experience and the hands-on experience that they need to have, and this would be one way that would contribute to that.
Mr. Chair, if I may, and I don't get into a debate of this tonight, but...
Wait a minute. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
My question was, how are you, how did you market the first restaurants and what further marketing will you do, advertising? How do people find out about it? Because I'm sure the restaurants may not know. And is it out of Greenville as well?
That's part of the, the great piece of this is that we really did not market it at all. Our company that we are engaged with has done all the marketing. And they've actually contacted all the restaurants and met with them and been able to bring them online for Pitt County schools. And now we'll, we'll become part of the process as well to market it at the school level.
So every single restaurant in Greenville, no matter how large or small, is a part of?
No, that's, that's the thing, only 150 restaurants. There's more than 400-plus restaurants in Pitt County that could become a part of this process.
But some of them have put up banners saying that they participate.
And I just wanted to say, one man's trash is another man's treasure, right? We hope.
It's money, it's been just the same.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to reiterate and echo what Worth was saying. I could see this tied as, as it sort of relates to fuel and energy and those kinds of things. I would down the road like to see some of the profits of it go toward our field trip, curriculum-based field trips and those kinds of things. Because I don't want to get in that debate tonight, but, but we need to make sure that we provide those resources to allow those experiences to happen to those young people. You, you might not know what, you might not remember 10 years from now what happened in Ms. X's algebra class on such and such a day, but you remember that field trip that they went on to experience some applied learning skills and those kinds of things. And so those are lifelong skills and that's the kinds of things that I hope that we will continue to promote. This is one way that we can help make that happen.
Also at your seat is an overall financial update on our fund balance. Right now, I'm in the process of finalizing the budget resolution for the year. We just ran the second teacher payroll, which really is our, the last step before we actually put a budget together to be formally adopted by the board for the fiscal year. And as we turn to the second page of this handout, I'd like to start with a discussion as far as county appropriations. And basically what I've done here is I've broken down the county appropriations between operations and capital, showing over the last five years the change in those appropriations. And since 2011, our operating appropriations have reduced by about $300,000. Our capital, which we received $750,000 a year from, from the county for capital projects, $750,000 this year has been reduced down to zero. So as we look for this fiscal year, just from 2012, 2013, our overall appropriations, combining operations and capital, have reduced $872,000. And over a two-year period, it's over a million dollars of reductions in county appropriations. The $750,000 was taken out of capital in order to protect the state low-wealth allotment. And we had a lot of discussions with the board about the impact of reductions in operating allocations could have on the $5 million-plus that receive, receiving state low-wealth. So in other words, our capital allocations have been reduced down to zero. As it stands right now, we are not receiving any dollars to fund our category one, two, and three projects, which would be roofing replacements, painting, athletic equity. We're not receiving anything from the county to cover our capital needs. So as we move forward and look at the second page of this handout, I'd like to start off with a discussion of local fund balance appropriations. And again, this would be scheduled to be included as just a part of the budget resolution, which I'm in the process now of trying to put together. The local fund would have an appropriated fund balance for various projects of about $3.9 million. With unappropriated fund balance, basically our savings account standing at approximately $2.5 million. If we take a closer look at the fund balance appropriations, you got projects that were started in 2012 but not completed until after June 30th. That includes online testing computers, almost $875,000 that, of computers that we had on order back in May of this past year. We actually did not receive those computers until July, so it must be included in this year's budget. And then capital projects, we had about $228,000 worth of capital projects that were ongoing at June 30th, given the fact that the summer months are the time where we try to, to complete a lot of projects when the students are not in the classroom. So those were ongoing again as of the beginning of the new school year. We have carryovers, which are very common in both facility service and instructional supplies. Both the facilities and our schools as well as director areas love to hold money over from the prior year to ensure that they have a set aside in case there's budget reductions. That's just good budget planning, but these are to cover our various projects, capital projects, as well as a split between the school allocations for instructional supplies and for staff development. As we remember, the state basically wiped out all staff development allocations several years ago, so we do not receive an allocation from the state for those. And then we have one-time project needs. First of all, transportation equipment replacements, approximately $600,000 to be looked at in conjunction with the transportation facility. The next phase of online testing is approximately $750,000 that we had set aside to meet those state mandates over the next couple of years. I hoped to couple that with some state allocations for technology to at least get us to approximately $1 million for online testing and technology in general for our schools. One-time instructional supply allocation to the schools of $36,000. Again, that's, once $1,000 per school, that was basically used by the finance office as a little reward for all the work that had gone into the beginning and opening of schools. Schools did an outstanding job, I must say, as a whole, from the financial perspective and human resources perspective in getting the information to us in order to process the beginning of the year payrolls. Legal fees for unitary status in conjunction with Robyn or outside counsel. It was projected that an additional $100,000 worth of legal fees would be associated with the unitary status case, so I've put that in here in order to cover those additional costs. The exceptional children's program has, has basically covered its instructional supply needs for the next three years. And we are using about $332,000 worth of fund balance to cover those curriculum supplies, again, as just an overall part of the total cost of those supplies, which again should cover the program for the next several years. And then the potential for unforeseen budget reductions, both at a state and local basis, $250,000. This is basically just a, to cover us in case an emergency were to occur. As we saw last year, the county actually reduced our operating allotments in the middle of the year. So we had to take the brunt of that. And it's also, it's, it's good to set aside some dollars to protect ourselves in case there's additional state reductions or changes within our student membership that calls for reductions back in our allotments to the state. So overall, $3.9 million, the vast majority of it going towards instructional programming, I think over 65% of the total instructional programming. And then capital needs to cover ongoing capital projects as well as the needs at our transportation facility. If we turn to the last page of the handout, shows the, the fund balance within the capital fund. And remember, the capital fund is a completely separate fund from the local operating fund. At the beginning of this fiscal year, we had a, a fund balance of approximately $1.4 million, which is a pretty nice-sized fund balance for, for the capital fund. That fund balance right now is, has been completely appropriated to not only covering projects in the current year based off of what was approved by the facilities committee this past year, as well as appropriated to cover future capital projects in the upcoming fiscal years. For 2012, 13, we have $634,000 of appropriated fund balance to cover the category one, two, and three projects that were included in the proposed budget and approved by both the facilities and the finance committee. Includes painting, athletic equity, equipment allocations to the schools. We've got some transportation equipment, activity bus and new maintenance, new truck. And again, that was approved through the, through the board process at both the facility and finance committee levels. Then we have dollars set aside for future capital projects. We've got $500,000 set aside for 2013, 14. As you can see, it's already a reduction, approximately $134,000 from the current year. And with that being said, that would only leave possibly $283,000 available for capital projects in 13, in 14, 15. So as we can see that the impact of our reduction in county appropriations has the potential to hit our capital allocations pretty extensively if we do not make more people aware of how, of the impact it could have specifically on roofing projects, painting, which are ongoing deferred maintenance that we have in the school system. The budgets could be reduced, but the overall needs of our 3 million-plus square feet do not go away.
Two questions, Michael. On the local fund balance appropriated, the online testing computers that we purchased last year and are going to purchase this year, we're required to obtain those because the state has decreed that all testing is going to be?
That's right. I think for the, what is it, the 2014 school year?
Has any money come from the state to buy the computers so we can do that online testing?
No, we've, I believe for the last four years, we've been putting probably at least $750,000 worth into technology purchases for capital. And we do get the routine state fines and forfeitures for technology, but we've, we've tried to make sure that we set that aside in case of emergency. You know, you've got to have dollars set aside in case servers go down. We've got, we, we just put $400,000-plus wireless routers in our, our schools as part of the Race to the Top grant. We need replacement for those because they only have a certain amount of life, so we don't want to use our state dollars and dip and pull it down to zero to have just in case of emergency. But for the purpose of this endeavor, no, we have not received any additional.
Now, those computers are obviously, can be used for other things.
Oh, yeah.
So it's put, it is put, okay. My other question is about the county appropriate, capital appropriation. Have we agreed not to put that in our budget request for three years? I mean, do we, do we have any long-term agreement in terms of that $750,000 that we've been getting since time?
Well, that, that reduction was taken as part of the county's overall budget process. They reduced us over $800,000.
Right, but do we, next year, does anything?
No, I do not believe, there's nothing that I think we've agreed to, no. That will go back in as far as our proposed budget, put it that way.
So you're just hedging and?
Yes, exactly. I'm making the board aware of the impact it could have in future budget years if that capital dollars are not restored back to our local, local budget.
I do think, to be fair, we asked the commissioners if the reduction was absolutely a have-to, that we have the option of taking it in capital versus operational because we didn't want the potential impact to low wealth. And so, but that was it. It was, to me, it was a one-time.
So it's, can be back on the table next year?
It will be put back in our proposed budget.
I think we have to ask to have it back.
I want to ask you about, and maybe you don't, the ADM, is IADM down or up?
Well, we've only had days one through 10 that's actually been reported thus far.
And how do, how do they look?
They were down from projected, but it's important that we just don't look at them in isolation. I really need the full 20 days to see how it came back.
But as of right now, they're down?
Just based off the first 10 days.
And they always look down.
They're always down.
Down on the first 10 days.
I think we need to clarify, enrollment over last year is up, but did the?
Projected.
But did we meet the projected?
Projected.
We were under that a little bit.
Yeah.
So I don't want to confuse anybody who's looking at, until we get those 20-day numbers hammered out, we?
And usually that second 10 days you pick up?
Well, we had already seen an increase in days five through 10. I mean, they dropped, it picked up dramatically.
Right.
We just need to carry that out, to see what the full impact would be.
And again, it's the projected number.
That's right.
What's the 20, when is the 20th day?
It's, yes, so schools are cleaning up. There were some issues that needed to be cleaned up, and as soon as we have that, we should have some numbers you can, you can look at to, to look at the 20th day.
Before you leave. Did you want to ask that now? Because mine's kind of shifting to a little different.
Mine's shifting to a different.
The one thing I want to say is too, in regards to online computer testing, one thing people need to keep in mind is, and I hear this a lot from people in the community, it's difficult for some students in the population to take online tests, particularly those tests where there are reading passages for students to take because students want to be able to see that entire printed passage so that they can see the text, underline, highlight. And I know you can do those things on a computer as well, but in, in some situations where there's been year-end over year-end testing, there's a significant difference there and it causes some to wonder if it's not because of using the online resource and just, just be cognizant of that in, in a lot of different settings.
And this would probably fall on the finance and Dr. Emery, maybe you can answer this, but I've had, and I was gonna mention it to Mary and Billy today, but I was with a patient at the hospital. And I got called, I think today or yesterday, regarding Northwest. A lot of those teachers out there think that they are supposed to receive a stipend and they're highly upset that they are not receiving a stipend as of yet and that they were promised a stipend.
Well, as you all remember, you approved an incentive program during the summer, and I think there's been a little miscommunication about, I think some folks felt like that was gonna go back to last year and not start with the new school year. So I've offered to go out and sit down and talk with them, also offered to invite the board members from that attendance area. And the school also has gotten significant title dollars, so there's nothing that would preclude, you know, some of the schools set aside some of their title money for that purpose. So we're working on it.
EPS update on Race to the Top, Tom Feller?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Two things we're gonna look at. One is where we started, I guess, and where we're at, where we're gonna go. If you look at this, you should have a handout that was given to you. And I'm just gonna breeze through the first couple of pages because it's kind of a recap and more detail of what I talked with you about last time in the spring in regards to the staff development days that were used for the waiver. So that's just some, some harder numbers in terms of number of hours that were spent, how the days were used. You'll see the very first thing there was that there were 63 different content and grade span-specific trainings. Those were offered after school to teachers. Our attendance at that was about 752 teachers, which was very impressive once I started running the numbers. And then you've got the, the breakdown of how our waiver days were used, and we talked about that a couple of months ago. So I'm gonna skip to pages two and three. One of the things we did not talk about last time was our involvement with the RISA, that's the Regional Education Service Agency. Prior to Race to the Top, we were really not involved in that at all, but through Race to the Top, we've been able to partner with them. So we've been able to send teachers away to the trainings, basically on a train-the-trainer model. We're sending off coaches, the district specialists, and then some of the classroom teachers. And so the details are on there of the number of days broken down by content area of who's been attending that. But then the, the two new things that I really wanted to take a minute to emphasize come on page three. This is what I had introduced really, and we hadn't done, so now I wanted to give you an update on that. That's Curriculum Review Week. That was held at the end of June. That was the week when we brought teachers in to develop new curriculum guides for all the standards. So we had about 190 teachers. Those were from around the county. Most, most schools represented, if not all schools. We spent four days working with the teachers and they developed new guides for just about every content level and every grade level. Those guides have been put together in an online format. They're available to teachers online so that as they are updated, teachers will always have the most recent one. We'll do our first set of feedback on those guides at the end of October when we have our first waiver day from the state. So teachers will be able to give us feedback on those, any changes or updates we need to make, and we'll get the curriculum people looking at that. That was about $167,000 we spent just on salaries for those teachers that were involved. That was one of the, one of the advantages, I guess, is the teachers did have an opportunity to work on that over the summer and then get paid. After that, we did Curriculum Summer Institute. That was held the week before school started for the teachers, August 13th through the 16th. That's where we provided training on all those guides. So we had here about 94 different sessions. We did a conference for all practical purposes. We had a keynote speaker in the morning. We had multiple breakout sessions during the day. We were hosted at D.H. Conley. And the presenters during the week were the same teachers who had, who had created the guides. guides back in June. We wanted to make sure that there was some alignment there so that the people who were training on them were the ones that knew them best, so those were the ones that, that presented. Every presenter was paid a stipend again for that. They received $100 for, as the number of sessions they did. Some people did one, some people did three or four, just depending on the content and how much we needed them. So, and then the last page here is just some different resources provided in regards specifically to PLCs. We talked about how last year we made a very conscious decision to roll out all the training by using professional learning communities, so the teachers were in small groups, they were working on, learning the standards, working on developing lesson plans and assessments. So these are just some of the resources that were given to them to do that. So that kind of brings us up to where we are now. And then moving forward, we have again the four waiver days from the state. The first one is at the end of this month, it's October 26th. So the team that is working on that is just finalizing all the resources. We were actually talking on the phone today, trying to get that tidied up, and we'll do a, a training for everyone involved with that next week. And what we did is, actually I should say what I did, since I don't have a department, was, they laugh at me, put together a video, kind of setting a vision for where we need to go with professional development in terms of these new standards. So if you can watch the TV screen, and I will try and get you some, some decent sound here. When we think we talk about teaching and learning, there are three key things that we need to keep in mind at all times. The first one is curriculum. Now, curriculum is what we teach. It's driven by the state through the standards of the standard course of study. Can you hear it at all? It was established at the district level through the new curriculum guides, and it addresses standard three, the teacher evaluation instrument. The second area here is instruction. Now, instruction is how we teach. In Pitt County Schools, this specifically means things like thinking maps, PSYOP, the nine high-yield strategies, and it goes back to standard four on the teacher evaluation instrument. Finally, the third area is assessment. Assessment is how we know students know what they're supposed to know and are able to do what they're supposed to do. This is addressed in standard four H of the teacher evaluation instrument, and we are anticipating with standard six. These three ideas are pretty basic. I think everyone understands them and would agree on them. So let's focus our discussion instead on how they interact, okay? Now, the first area, which again is, is probably the most basic, is right up here, where curriculum and instruction interact. Where, where these two meet together is what I'm going to call content-specific strategies, things like guided reading, or science notebooking, guided math, math foundations. These are programs or instructional strategies that are being driven by the content itself, in contrast to things like thinking maps or the nine high-yield strategies that happen and work independently of the actual content being taught. Again, this is a pretty basic thing that I think most of us are, are in agreement on, and we understand. Where, as a district, our teachers in Pitt County School are really struggling is down here, we're in, with assessment and how it interacts with these two. So let's see if we can clarify that a little bit. The first area we're going to talk about is where assessment and curriculum come together. Now, this is summative assessment. Why is it summative assessment? Well, we're assessing the what students know and are able to do. And I say that we're assessing the what because we all have had situations where either we're in class, or we've had students that can pass a test. They come into class and on the very first day, practically they can pass that test with proficiency because they already know the content. So in, in many ways, this is independent of the instruction. It is, it's only measuring what students know or be able to do, which could be what they came to us with, or it could be what we gave them. Now, the second area over here, and this is key, and this has become a huge focus in the state, is where assessment and instruction cross each other. This is formative assessment. Why is it called formative assessment? Because at its heart, formative assessment is designed to drive instruction. So at its heart, what we're doing is assessing how we talk. What that means is that formative assessment and summative assessment could be delivered in the exact same format, it could be the same test. It, it's not the test, it's not the format, it's not how it's given, it's why it's given that determines whether something is formative or summative. And when we give formative assessment, at, at the, the very root of what we're asking is, how well did I teach these students, and how can I get better so that they will get better? Now, a real key area here, and this is where we're going to spend the rest of our time talking, is right here in the middle, where we've got this sweet spot. This is where all three of these ideas intersect. That's curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And this is really the core of everything that we're doing, or that we should be doing. Several things go in here, four of them that we've identified. First is PLCs. PLCs help us address curriculum because in a functioning PLC, that group of teachers is going to help identify what the agreed-on curriculum is that they are going to teach. And then they're going to come down here to assessment, and they're going to develop an assessment to test what they taught. And then they're going to look at that assessment up here in instruction, and they're going to ask themselves, where did I do well as a teacher? Where did I not do as well and I need to improve? And we're going to compare our results so that where I'm weak and you're strong, you can help me, and where I'm strong and you're weak, I can help you. The next one is revised blooms. Now, revised blooms is embedded within the standards, in particular, the essential standards. But what we have to remember is, I'm going to both assess and instruct a standard differently depending on where it falls on, on revised blooms. For example, if I'm teaching something for understanding level, I'm going to assess that and teach it differently than if the standard calls for it to be at the evaluation level or the application level. The next one is 21st century skills. Now, let's be honest, 21st century skills is kind of a buzzword. It's absolutely enormous, and we're going to have to talk about that. If you remember back to the initial trainings that we've all had on 21st century skills, we had that rainbow. So here's the rainbow. Now, this again is just a huge concept, and we don't have time to talk about it all, so let's talk specifically where we're going right now at Pitt County Schools, and that's right here, with this information, media, and technology skills. And we say that because there are a lot of different technology initiatives going on in the district. We're using technology in a lot of different ways. We have the new IT standards that talk about how do we use information. So this really, right now, in the 21st century skills, is kind of where our focus is. When we come back here, remember, the IT standards address content. That's the curriculum. And then how we teach really is addressed through a lot of those different skills, problem-solving, critical thinking, things like that. And then down here at assessment, not only does technology allow us to assess differently, but it also helps us analyze the assessment results. Let's be honest, we cannot analyze results efficiently, we probably can't even analyze them at all, because the data is just astronomical in terms of the amount. So we need that technology to help us understand them. Again, so here, here's what we're looking at in terms of 21st technology, excuse me, 21st century skills, and, and the key area right now is over here where we're doing technology and information. The last one that we're going to put in here after PLCs, revised blooms, and 21st century skills is literacy, which includes academic vocabulary. Now, Dr. Mike Schmoker, who wrote the book Focus, and we've done a lot of work with him in his books this year, and he'll be at Curriculum Instructional Institute, Curriculum Summer Institute in a couple of weeks. He quotes the literacy experts, and he identifies this as a key component, and he says that literacy is the spine that holds together curriculum and instruction. Now, if we think about this some more, we also recognize that we cannot assess a student if they can neither read nor write. I mean, this is very evident, and it's real obvious when you think about Read 3D. In first grade, we see a big dip mid-year on one of, on, you know, some of the benchmarking because all of a sudden, reading is included in that score, in that proficiency score. You cannot successfully take and pass a test as a student if you cannot read or write. So literacy right here, I mean, it's just huge, and, and that's going to be a big focus of the standard course of study now that we've got the Common Core standards, because one of the shifts in the Common Core standards is this literacy embedded throughout the curriculum. So again, just to summarize, we've got a couple of key areas that we need to think about. The first is curriculum. That's what we teach. Second is instruction. That's how we teach. The last one is assessment. That's how we know students have learned. We look up here at the green, those are content-specific strategies that are driven by the content. We come down here, we've got the assessment of what, that's summative assessment, and we've got the assessment of how, that's formative assessment. And our biggest focus, where we've got to get to right now, what's at the core of everything, is right here in the center, literacy and academic vocabulary, 21st century skills, in particular, technology, having a solid found, foundation in understanding revised blooms and how to use it, and in working, in working PLCs. These are our three areas.
All right, so in terms of how we move forward then, that's kind of what's driving everything, giving us our focus, as we design these staff development days for the Common Core waivers, and also in terms of all the staff development we've started doing in the initiatives, we're trying to make sure it all ties back to this.
Yes. I'd like to have a copy of, of that. I think it would help.
Send you a link. It's on, it's online. We could send you the link.
Yeah, do that.
Dr. Emery, one of the things that makes professional learning communities so successful is when teachers have common planning time. Do the elementary level, middle school, and high school, all schools in Pitt County, do they have common planning time, at least with the core?
They, they are striving to do that. I think in most of our schools, and part of our fall evaluation conferences, as we are getting out now and looking at, that's one of the things we ask as we look at the schedule. And I know, I know the principals are trying to do that, and I would, I would want to tell you, in the majority of our schools, they've been able to do that. I know high schools sometimes, creating that for departments is not the easiest, not the easiest scenarios, but that's the goal. Middle schools, I would tell you, very successful. It works there in that schedule much more, much more readily than, than some of the other buildings, but it certainly is a goal. The early release days and the waiver days have just been a real support to us in, in terms of enabling the PLC process.
One thing that I would ask is, and I know as much as possible, we try to do this, we do have those early release days, at least some of the occasions that teachers be left alone so that they can have that time to work in the classrooms or collaborate together as opposed to district-wide professional development. That, that's a real morale booster, particularly in this time of the year when there's not as many, or in, as the General Assembly has deemed fit, that there's not as many days for teachers to have in terms of workdays. I think that's a big thing to help them to just have time to just work on lesson planning, grading, assessing, taking a breath, supporting.
Actually, I was going to make this part of my comments at the end of the meeting, but it's more appropriate now. I had a great visit at Walcoats today, and at Walcoats, they have, every teacher has a 90-minute PLC opportunity during the school day. The kids go to their encore programs back-to-back one day a week so that that grade level has 90 minutes together. And so we're not asking them to do the PLC work after they've taught all day, which I just think is absolutely critical. And I actually had the pleasure of sitting in on one of the PLC meetings today and listened to the teachers, and, you know, as always, I was impressed with the, the focus on the data, the focus on the kids, and the professionalism of these teachers, and I'm sold as far as, as the critical nature of PLCs and what they can do for our teachers and our kids. I encourage everybody to just go drop in, see if you can't, time a visit to a school when there's a PLC meeting going on, because it really was great to sit and listen.
All right. Thank you, Senator.
I just would like to echo that Tom sort of jokingly talked about his department, and he is his department, and he has done an outstanding job. When he, we first saw him playing with the little markers and the circles there, folks, all of us were like, this is brilliant, this really does encapsulate it, and we did use it with our administrative retreat and to try to create some common, yes, this is what we need to be focused on, and people have been very supportive of that. So I want to say thank you to Tom. I also want to say that at points in time, we've created Race to the Top a real headache, but all of the things that he talked about here would not have been possible without that funding. We dedicated a third of our Race to the Top funding to professional development, and so it has been a way to give teachers opportunities that we otherwise would not have had the money for, so we appreciate that. Also, would like to say a big thank you to Elmhurst. We appreciate all that you all do and the environment that you create, and for being here tonight to, to share that. We applaud, applaud you in every way. I wanted to congratulate Ms. Council. Her son did the Rose Convocation last week, did an outstanding job. It was nice to, it's always nice to see the alumni come back and do convocation, and I know you were a very proud mama last week. Also want to congratulate the, the whole biodiesel effort, and I appreciate that Michael and Heather and folks got out, and I think schools getting something back quickly was a really great idea because it is a motivator. And also want to say thank you to all the restaurants in our community who are on board. I don't think we dreamed that this quickly this would happen, and that's another sign that despite what people may say or think, they do support something when you make it easy for them to do so, and we appreciate that support. We really appreciate that. I also, at our last board meeting, we talked about the heroic efforts in Farmville after a bus incident, and I just want to say again, and I hope I can do this without being emotional, we also experienced a tragic accident at North Pitt a little over a week ago, and there's just not words to convey the phenomenal, quick, smart work of the staff in addressing that. I just can't say enough about the North Pitt staff, from coaches to first responders, administrators, teachers. They created a triage area. They knew who was supposed to be on that bus. It was just an absolute remarkable response. Joey Wellington from Transportation, who was on the scene quickly, Dr. Nolan, who went to the hospital and got there before any kids got there, so there was somebody from our staff to receive those youngsters. We had 17 students transported. We had one spin, one night. And if you haven't seen any of the pictures, I would tell you, all you have to do is look at the photos to believe there was divine intervention, and that may not be a very politically correct thing for me to say, but having gone to the scene, there is no way that kids walked away unless there's some great purpose for them on this earth, and I, I believe that. And so not only are we grateful that they're here, and they're healthy, and they're all back in school, but we really appreciate how a team comes together. And this was an early release day where staff were going to work on PLCs, and one of the comments there was, after the dust had settled and all the emergency vehicles went away, the teachers at North Pitt were like, okay, well, we got to get to our, our PLCs, and it was, it was just such a profound, I think, moment for me, because you realize that sometimes the efforts out there are about kids and life and death, and how important it is to be on the spot and supporting them, and those folks just did a phenomenal job. So I, I want to, I, I know in all the newscasts about accidents, nobody's out there saying the staff in this high school did an amazing job managing it, and they did. And then finally, on a happier note, I, I want to say thank you to South Greenville staff. I appreciate Ms. Council and Ms. Little attending on Friday, an exciting event where students at. at South Greenville had a very symbolic, giving them their iPads, from iPad to grad, and they modeled it very much like a graduation ceremony, and we appreciate all the effort that went into that, and support from ECU for allowing us to do that on their campus. But we all await with great expectation the outcomes of technology at South Greenville as well. But we appreciate the support of this board, the parents, and the community in making that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize County Commissioner Johnson for being with us on tonight. Thank you for being with us tonight. Benji?
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of comments. Number one, I do want to continue to encourage our restaurants to take a part in that biodiesel project that we have. I think it's turning into a tremendous opportunity for Pitt County schools to be able to find another avenue of resources to provide those things to our kids that we all want, and look forward to determining as the proceeds in that project grow, to determine how we want to continue to implement programs that we now have, and maybe encourage others that that project could fund. The other thing I did want to mention, Dr. Emery, was that I know that there was a committee put together of teachers for career technical education to determine how and why and when field trips would be taking place in the county. I appreciate the opportunity that the teachers had. I would hope that when those committees are put together, because of the uniqueness of the program areas within the confines of the CTE programs, that at least one teacher from each program area would be a part of that, or any future county-wide committees that'll put together for those kinds of things.
John?
I would say, last week was a very exciting week for Pitt County schools with the art exhibit opening, and then the very next day, having the front page story about South Greenville getting their computers. I'd also like to thank the teachers and the administrators and the community people who have agreed to serve on the dress code committee. I know that it has been assembled and we're working on dates for our first meeting.
I just wanted to say, I was reading through the board book and saw about Reverend Richard Mercer's retirement from the Farmville Central District, and I remember with great fondness, Reverend Mercer working with students as a custodian and as a bus driver, and those positive interactions with the elementary school students. Some of you may or may not know, but in Farmville, the buses carry for all of the schools in that district, between the four schools, and Reverend Mercer was a great inspiration to a large number of students, often quasi-ministering to them in terms of getting their acts together or getting their work done, and often it's the little things that people overlook in terms of what people do and the contributions they give to students, in whatever position they're in, whether they're in the role of a cafeteria worker, or custodian, or teacher, or whomever it may be. But it's individuals like Reverend Mercer that make Pitt County schools a great place to be, and it's that, again, that human resource capital that makes this district a great district.
I'm very interested, as Benji said, in that CTE field trip committee. I think those field trips are very important, and I think there's money in the system to allow those students to go on those field trips. It's the bottom line. Another thing, if South Greenville can use iPad, I brought mine tonight, and I used it, and Barbara, it's not that hard.
Oh, good, you must have been here with me.
So I have been working with it at home, and I look forward to that transition. And also, again, an appreciation to Elmhurst and Donna, your leadership, I'm telling you, is wonderful. And also, the staff members that are there, because without those staff members, you wouldn't be able to do what you can do. And parents as well. And that includes Sean, who's one of those parents. And Tom, I appreciate your vision on this staff development and program that you've put together. Often times with staff development, and it can be very frustrating, it just goes in all different directions, but it looks like you've got it under control and got it going in a direction that will benefit the system, especially when you're looking at curriculum, instruction, and assessment. So that's all I have.
Okay, I'd just like to detail what the superintendent said about the South Greenville iPad program that was really great, thoroughly enjoyed that. And also, Logan had also an opportunity to go to North Pitt High School and talk to two sessions of the Spanish classes while he was in town, and so he enjoyed that. And also went to ECU and shared some information about foreign service. He's sort of recruiting, I guess, for other young people to get in a wonderful program in our system. Also, tonight, the fair opened, and there's a lot of good things for the whole family to see, actually, and there are a lot of youth involvement at the fair. Four-Hers have great booths out there, so please go out and look at those. And so I'm excited about that happening this week, too, to give our children and families some other opportunities to be exposed.
Is Tom still here, or did he? He left. I want to say thank you to Tom for the good work that he's doing. I just caught my eye, the folder that we were given from Elmhurst, Donna's card is included, and the slogan for Elmhurst Elementary School is "The Tradition Continues," and that really struck me because over the years, attendance lines come and go, and children come and go, and nobody at Elmhurst cares who walks in that door. They do their job and take care of every one of those kids, and it truly is a tradition of excellence. Congratulations to you all that are keeping that going.
I'd like to say, I'm just glad to be back home. But I also would like to thank our board for allowing me to attend the first inaugural Howard Lee Institute in Greensboro for four days last week, and it felt good to know that we had six schools from our district that were represented there, and I appreciate those who attended. You know who you are. I'd also like to say that during that session, there were so many different sessions within the sessions of people who had came to speak with us, but one of the main things that I took from it was the emphasis on Common Core, and how well we're doing, and I felt real good because I had learned so much from Cheryl and from Sandra, so I didn't feel like I was left behind at all. And then they were singing the praises of the fact that North Carolina graduation overall rate has risen, and that our dropout rate is one of the lowest in the country now, and that we're really, really working towards those goals in our county. And one of the other things that I took away from it was the emphasis on faith-based initiatives, which is what we've been doing here in our county anyway. We have lots of times that churches adopt our schools through PTOs and through PTAs and through stakeholders, and I felt proud of the fact that we're one of the leaders in the East when it comes to that, and the emphasis on how important and how value, how much value we put on the ones who come in and volunteer into our schools, and that made me feel really good. But there was one odd thing that I took away from it that I thought was very unique from the time, like I said, back in the day when I was in school, as opposed to what our students are learning now, and it might be just a word to the wise, but I learned that just at any given day, at any given school, throughout North Carolina, there are 294 different languages that are spoken within our schools on a daily basis. So if you take that into account with just the languages, can you imagine how many races that we have to look forward, you know, that we have to educate and to come on board with what we're doing and what Common Core is so very important? Because even though we may have 294 languages being spoken any given day in any of our schools in our state, we still have to educate all of those kids, and Common Core would be that link as to what our child learned here in Pitt County, as to what they'll learn in California. And they were from all over, you know, as far as Chicago, we had people from Chicago, New York, LA, you know, to attend, so I look forward to that. And for our board members who didn't get the opportunity to go this year, hopefully you'll sign up for it next year and, you know, bring a lot of good information back to us. That's about it.
That was good. Just from observation and from attendance this past week, that three committees couldn't meet because of, they didn't have a full quorum, and as I looked at the agenda over the weekend, and I noticed it was such a small agenda, which is a good thing as well, but I'm just wondering if we need to think about recreating and re-establishing some of these areas to make it more efficient for staff and for board.
Well, I have proof in the picture that Mildred Council was the proudest woman in Pitt County the other day at convocation, and she should have been. It was a great moment for the school and for her family, and Logan did an outstanding job, and is a great example and a great role model for our students. So thank you for sharing him with us. And to the South Greenville staff, students, teachers, everybody, alumni, mother of that school, it was another list to check, another item to check off of great things that are going on at that school, and the proud moment it was for those kids to walk across that stage, stand there and get their picture made with that iPad, and the technological education that it will provide for them, and the future is bright for them there, and just keep working hard, and I appreciate all the effort that went into those kids parading in there and behaving so well for over an hour, and waiting for their turn to go up on that stage was really remarkable. It really was. But it was a proud day for South Greenville, and I know the future is very bright for them, is using the iPads and learning a lot from them, so thank you. I was glad to be there.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we go into closed session to consult with our attorney to consider and give instructions concerning a potential or actual claim, administrative procedure, or judicial action, and establish or instruct the staff or agent concerning the negotiation of the price and terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property.
All in favor? Let's take about five minutes. Let's vote.
Are they going to the second floor, I mean, third?